Good afternoon and welcome.[12.11][12.11](Laughter).[13.11][13.11](Laughter).[14.11][14.11](Laughter). This is the special meeting of the Board of Development and Enforcement. Today is Thursday, October 20th, 2016. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mary Clay.
Present.
Here.
Here. Okay, we have one item deferred from the October 19th meeting. And it is item number six of the October 19th meeting, and that was request from the Executive Director, St. Louis Development Corporation for approval of Board Bill Number 149. This ordinance is for the issuance of up to 2,800,000-plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment financing notes for St. Louis Grocery Real Estate LLC. This is a parcel development agreement to provide for the redevelopment of the Greenleaf Project, which cost is approximately $19,665,000 and should result in approximately 79 new jobs. Okay, do we have any additions, corrections, or deletions? I will recognize the mistake that was made in the title of the agenda. It says Thursday, September 20th, but it is Thursday, of course, October 20th of 2016. So we'll make that change. And with that, are there any other additions, corrections, or deletions?
I would like to add a addition, you said corrections?
Well, whatever, just whatever you want to call them.[111.11][111.11](Laughter).
It's addition to the language, and it should say as amended, unless you will be, whoever is making the motion would say as amended. That's the only thing I've noticed, so we have the amendments on the second page.
Well, this is the item before us, and I think what we'll do is that we will submit an amendment, right, as we go forward.
Is that how we do that? Okay.
So we'll take a motion and a second, and then we'll recognize an amendment.
I'll move that we approve item number six.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that issue?
I move that we would amend item number six to incorporate changes that benefit the community. And I guess I'll start reading them.
Okay.
Okay, we have First Amendment would be to reduce the amount of time that the SID sales tax can be imposed, and it will end at the end of the TIF, which is December 31, 2032, allowing instead of 40 years, it would go to the 16 years, which is the end of that particular TIF. And then the second thing on here is if the developer seeks an extension, and then there's reasons why he can only seek an extension would be permitted by the SID petition is one reason. The city and the SID enter into a new or amended agreement for the SID, and then the sales tax would end no later than December 31, 2046. And in other words, after it ends, after the TIF, which is in 16 years, if application is made for it to be extended, it can only be extended out 30 instead of 40.
Okay.
So 40 years is gone.
Okay, do we have, like, a substitute bill that, or are the amendments written down in a place that, do we have that?
Dale, do you want to speak to this?
No, we only have 149 in front of us. So Dale, we have 149 in front of us, and you've heard it.
Yeah, what the Controller was describing are changes essentially in Board Bill 150, which will go, you know, will make those changes before the Board of Alderman. 149, which is really the bill before you all, there was just really one minor change in that, and that was really just discovered in our complete review, doesn't really relate directly to the Controller's concern, but I think that changes before you. In Amendment Number One to Board Bill 149, do you have a copy of that? Well, it's not, it's not exactly that.
Oh, we don't have, we don't have the amended, we just have the page, the one page that was...
This is all we have.
Yeah, that's what it is.
And we have that.
It's Title Amendment Number One to Board Bill 149, right?
Oh, I see. Where is it?
We have other copies if you don't have it.
It's not in my pack?
Don't say that.
Okay.
And it's just switching the word, that one little phrase wording in two different places, which, as it is right now, talks about declared as surplus, the SID revenues declared as surplus and distributed in a manner providing in this, provided in this act. And that's really the wording you'd use if it was a larger TIF area, right?
Well, if it was a single site.
A single site, excuse me, a single-site TIF area. But because this is for, can be used for multiple products, projects, then it should say return to the special allocation front of its debt. So that's really the only change in the board bill that's actually before you.
If, since the bill that we really want to change, since that isn't before us, we have an amendment that would allow for that language to be added to Board Bill 150 at the Board of Alderman to address the concerns of the Controller. So essentially, what the amendment would do, it would say that Board Bill 150 would not be valid unless the language we have here is included in the Board Bill 150, is taken up as an amendment to the Board, to the Board Bill at the Board of Alderman.
You have that to introduce?
Yeah, 149 wouldn't be, wouldn't be valid unless 150 is changed to include additional language. See, the challenge is that all the things that we want to change, none of those things are before us there at the Board.
So...
But that's just the recommendation. I have that amendment if that's what you want.
Okay, I was certainly, I know there were some discussions that were had, which I was not privy to.
Me too.
And so, well, somebody give us some direction here. I know there was some discussions.
Yeah, okay. It sounds like that pretty well solves that problem.
That solves that problem because the things that, the issues that the Controller pointed out, they're, we can't handle them here, they're not before us.
So can we have a copy?
The Board is, the bill is at the Board of Alderman.
Do you bring copies?
Yes, what this allows us to do, this amendment would allow us to recommend language to be placed in the Board Bill at the Board of Alderman and have it amended. And if it's not amended, then the Board Bill 149, the one we take up today, would be not before us.
That's fine. And what I want to make sure we do is somebody, we have a lawyer, our lawyer take a look at this.
Yeah.
And make sure that it accomplishes the purpose that I think we all want to achieve.
One more hand.
Oh, okay.
Is that the answer?
Oh.
Yeah, I have Mark put that.
So is this, excuse my not being a lawyer, is this like canned language, or looks like it was pulled from something?
The amendments that we do at the Board.
This is an amendment that's done at the Board.
Yeah, when we amend Board Bills, this is what we do with the Boards at the time. Yeah, it's just an option. We could just, just leave it up to the Board to change it. Or we can put that in there and make it a little stronger.
I think for people that are sitting here listening, there's two, there are two bills that are related. One's 149, Board Bill 149, and one's, and one's Board Bill 150, I believe. They are related, and they are dependent upon each other. And there are some issues that the Controller brought up that were largely related to Board Bill 150, which is not before us, it's before the Board of Alderman, but they are intertwined. They are, they do, and they're, they do, they're related bills, so they were legitimate issues to bring up. And the issue that we're trying to resolve here is how best to, to make these amendments to the bills in front of us, or to make the suggested amendments to the bill in front of us, so that we have, so that it, that it takes care of the issues that we're here to try to resolve in Board Bill 150, even though this is Board Bill 149.
This language, I think in theory works, and there were some new languages came out about 1:00 today, that this would just need to be updated.
And this reflects that, I guess.
This is the new language that came out at 1:00. So we would say, the following, when we get to the following language, so from that colon form...
Mark will pull over and show to you.
This is the actual district project agreement, the underline is what's, what's new. So now there's A, B, and C.
That's the one that you brought?
Yeah. Right, you want to add this last, and then this one.
This is only 149. What they're wanting now is to put an extra condition on 149.
And that's changing.
Do that, just done.
Right. Addressing the Controller's concerns, E and C is probably very important, because that's sort of the year limitation.
Oh, okay, so that's your point.
Yeah. So there wasn't that concept?
I think, you want me to make a, make a motion for, to amend this, include the 149?
Okay, we had a motion by the Controller that hadn't been seconded yet in terms of what she wanted in the bill, and part of it had to do with 149, and part of it had to do with 150. But I think that what we need to do is make sure we do something to 149 to assure that those amendments are going to be made on 150.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what...
And that's what that does.
If the Controller withdraws her motion, I can make the amendment, I think that would satisfy.
I will throw my motion.
Okay. I move that we amend Board Bill 149 to include the following, to amend said Board Bill, page 35, line 9, to page 35, line 9, as follows. Beginning at page, beginning on page 35, line 9, after the words, code developer shall terminate, strike out the period, insert the following, insert the following figures. We go down to the colon, semicolon, and provide that this ordinance shall be deemed no void and no, and of no effect, and all rights conferred by the ordinance, by this ordinance on the developer or code developer shall terminate unless Section Three of the District Project Agreement included in Board Bill 150 ordinance is amended to add the following language. The initial proposition approving the district sales tax shall provide that the district sales tax will expire on December 31st, 2032, yeah, 2032. The end of the calendar year in which the, on which the tax increment financing within the district expires subsequent to the approval of the initial proposition, the district may submit one more proposition to...
One or more.
One or more propositions to the qualified voters extending the duration of the district sales tax so long as, A, the extension is permitted under the petition, B, the district and the city have amended this agreement or entered into an additional district project agreement providing for the use of any district sales tax revenue generated after the repayment of the Greenleaf TIF note. As defined in the parcel development agreement, the financing public improvements or service within the district, and C, the district sales tax does not extend beyond December 31st, 2046. And in Section Four, paragraph, within 12 months following the expiration of the district sales tax, whether the initial term of the district sales tax or the extent, extension permits, permitted by Section Three, district sale dissolve itself.
Okay, that's something different than I have.
That was the blue...
Yeah, that's the language that, that's right. This was the earlier language at the bottom here, and the new language is what the Attorney General just handed us.
Okay, so we got to make sure that we're all, that we get everything on one amendment on the same page. So it's very clear what we're doing. I don't want any misunderstandings or...
Does this know that somehow, does everybody have this?
With additional language in there?
Yeah, because what I just ran off was what we were just saying. I'm going to just take that.
I've got some additional copies here.
So, this is legalese, so I'm going to rely on the lawyers to tell us exactly how to write this, so it effectuates the purpose that we wanted to.
This is not the way I would have done it, but it will accomplish what you're trying to accomplish.
How would you do?
Maybe the alternative would be to condition your approval of 149 on 150 being amended with this new Appendix C.
That will also work, I think either approach is okay.
Okay. What's the best way to do it?
Since, oh, if somebody has strong desire to do it, with the amendment I was handed, there's no problem with doing that.
So what amendment do you have? I've got a couple of them here. There's a few amendments here. And the one that was given me, there was, President of Board of Alderman read, was a little different than the one I had, there was more language on it. So I want to make sure they were really clear here, this is going to be really important.
What I read, hold on for a second. What I read was the first part of this amendment with the new language that they just handed us that said came out at 1:00. I don't know if you saw it, we didn't see it, this is the first time I've seen it.
And this is where I have...
But if, if...
This?
Yes, this on the second page where they have the underline on the second page.
But if indeed this document that was just handed to us by the Attorney, that's what, what you guys agreed to, and that's what you want to pass, then the only thing we need to do is to say that this language that's on Section Three and the bottom of Section Four, be added to the Board Bill 150, right, unless, unless that, unless that language...
So you read the whole thing, but I think the mayor's asking Gordon how to do it, or if in fact what you read is what he recommends.
I think the same way.
I read his document.
No, it's their document.
My suggestion is that Mark Spikerman set out what he, his understanding of what we're doing here, and if you all agree that that's what's happening, then you vote on it. So he'll do it as clearly, as nicely as possible.
In other words, he explains what he wrote. Is that what, you will explain what you wrote and gave us?
Right, I can do that.
And then if we agree with it...
But somebody will have to make a, you, one of us three will have to make a motion.
I think that's the next, I agree.
At a minute, so.
I agree.
Yeah, you can incorporate what he says in your motion if you agree with it.
Right.
That's what I was thinking.
So one of us is...
That way, you know you're on the same page.
So I guess he can, I guess he can read what, but he can read what I just read, and then we say, then we say, okay, we vote on it.
And this is coming from the legal eagle here, and he will be on the hook.
Let him, nope.
State your name, sir.
We're still on the hook for it, but I'm reading it.
No, I mean, the legal guy is on the hook for it, the guy who's got a lot of license.
Yeah, just for the record, state your name and who you represent.
Sure, I'm Mark Spikerman, I'm Phil Warren Bell, and I represent SLDC.
He's our lawyer.
There's two things that need to happen. With Board Bill 149, which is the TIF note ordinance, there's a, just a small internal inconsistency in the document, we just need to clean up. And that's, if you see Amendment Number One to Board Bill 149, it says revise line point two C. So those revisions need to be made as just a simple cleanup.
So one and two, both of these as a simple cleanup?
One and two.
Okay, well, what we need to do is probably make this as a separate motion.
Okay.
I would think.
I agree.
Let's just make it simpler, and then we, if we do something else, and then we'll do that separately.
Can I just move that?
No, but I didn't move it, but that's a suggestion.
So then we pause and make the motion now, or do you want to make the...
Now, I think, I think Mr. Reed made a motion.
Did he get seconded?
No, did not get seconded.
I will withdraw that motion unless, and that's the first check, first couple of changes that he showed us. Let's take up a motion just to adopt those changes and get that out of the way. So we have clean document, and then the second motion will...
So what we'll do is we'll take up, I'll make, well, somebody can make a motion that we adopt Amendment One to Board Bill 149, two men, that's, it's got the blue language on it.
Yeah, five point two C and five point three C.
And, yeah, regarding five point two C and five point three C. So if there's a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion carried. Now, there's one other issue we have to deal with.
As we give, you draw a Mark copy of that, so she can repeat it in minutes or whatever.
In the second item, we have, there's a district project agreement. This is Appendix C to Board Bill 150, and this is where we've addressed the Controller's concerns. So if you turn to page two, there's some red line or underlying language, and it says that the initial proposition approving the district sales tax is going to expire on December 31st, 2032, which is the end of the TIF. And it goes on to say that if the developer seeks an extension, you can only do so if it's, the extension's permitted under the SID petition, that the city and the district enter into an amended or new district project agreement describing the additional CID activities that are going to be funded, and that the district sales tax does not extend beyond December 31st, 2046, which is that 30-year number we talked about. And then in Section Four, we've added language that says the CID sales tax ever expires, the district has an obligation to go ahead and dissolve itself. So whether that occurs in 2032 or 2046, the district has to dissolve itself when it no longer has the sales tax. And so my suggestion would be that the Board condition its approval of Board Bill 149 on Board Bill 150 being amended with this new Appendix C.
In the form of a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so there's a motion, and so if you could just repeat that so we are very clear what the motion is.
Right, so I believe it's a motion to conditionally approve Board Bill 149 upon the...
No, we approve Board Bill 149.
Approve 149 upon the amendment of Board Bill 150 to include this document as a new Appendix C.
This document, you mean, how do we identify this document?
A new Appendix C?
Yes.
The whole document?
So we would, we're mending as a, as a second amendment to Board Bill 149. We're mending it to do what?
I think you need to read the stuff I just read.
Yeah.
Because you're going to have to do what I just did.
What I...
Because otherwise, the Board, if you really want it done right...
Are you suggesting that we replace Amendment C, which is now titled District Project Agreement? Is it titled amendment, okay, and you want the whole entire document replaced with the new document?
I think that would probably be easiest.
That's what he's stating, which includes, which includes the language that you read on page two.
So he's saying take the entire project agreement out of...
Out of Appendix C of Board Bill 150.
And replace it with this.
Right.
To make it simple and clean, so that in our instructions or amendments of the E and A meeting would...
Would reflect that.
Reflect it.
Yes.
So we would hand this over to you, Dora, as Amendment C in...
It's not Amendment C, but as...
Of Tribute C.
All right, before...
Appendix C.
Appendix C, sorry, thank you.
Before I can agree with that, I would need to see, if we're, if we're going to do a wholesale swap out of that entire line one to the other, I need to see the one that we're taking out of the, out of the Board Bill that's before the Board right now. Now, if we want to do, if we want to do exactly what we should be doing here, we would just read that language and amend it and be done with it. But if we're talking about swapping out this whole agreement, I would have to make sure that that agreement that's sitting over there at the Board of Alderman doesn't have any other different things in it, and I don't know that.
I think that's a valid point, and I'm okay with that as well, as we just, so how would you propose then that we do this?
The easy thing, you know, leave the language.
Yeah, yeah.
We, it says swapping it out, we could condition approval of 149 on this specific language being added to Appendix C and 150.
And to make that motion, you will have to read that language.
Yes, okay. So why don't you go ahead and make the motion to, tell us specifically what the motion is.
Okay. A motion to conditionally approve Board Bill 149 upon the amendment of Board Bill 150 to include the following language in Section Three of Appendix C, at the end of Section Three, quote, "The initial proposition approving the district sales tax shall provide that the district sales tax will expire on December 31st, 2032, i.e. the end of the calendar year in which tax increment financing within the district expires. Subsequent to the approval of the initial proposition, the district may submit one or more propositions to qualified voters extending the duration of this district sales tax so long as, A, the extension is permitted under the petition, B, the district and the city have amended this agreement or entered into an additional district project agreement providing for the use of any district sales tax revenues generated after the repayment of the Greenleaf TIF notes as defined in the parcel development agreement, finance public improvements or services within the district, and C, the district sales tax is not extended beyond December 31st, 2046, and further amend Appendix C by adding to the end of Section Four, within 12 months following the expiration of the district sales tax, whether the initial term of the district sales tax or an extension permitted by Section Three, the district shall dissolve itself. Period.
Okay, and the motion is, is made by President of Board of Alderman, Louis Reed, and is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Controller. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, unanimously approved. That amendment has just been approved and...
And I do need to state for the record, while we're still on the record, that as we negotiated these changes, I'm glad that we were able to reduce the number of years that the one, the extra one cent was added. So according to these changes, the one cent will expire after 16 years, which is the end of the current TIF, and it can only be extended by petition. And the language that the lawyer just read, those kinds of things.
And they would have to come back to the Board of Alderman.
They would have to come back. The second thing that didn't get done was the limit. I wanted to add the limit on up to amount, and that would have been 2.8 million.
Can I address that real quick?
Please do.
So the, you know, Board Bill 150 and Board Bill 149 are interrelated, and Board Bill 150 refers to the Greenleaf TIF note, which is the TIF note authorized by 149, and that note is limited to 2.8.
So I put a check mark on that one. And then the other item that I was trying to negotiate was the actual Board, and I had suggested that the Board would be appointed by the mayor in order to make it be more community-oriented, similar to what is in the Laughbroil TIF, meaning that, you know, by this being a entity, government entity and not a private entity, we're naming private... we're naming private individuals by name, which is slightly unusual in this case. And so I was trying to get it back to more of a government entity, you know, uh, familiarity of, no matter who the mayor is, they would appoint, but that did not get negotiated.
The, the CID Act requires that board of directors be either an authorized representative of a property owner or business owner in the district. The mayor still appoints them, but they have to meet those qualifications.
Correct.
So that, that's where we were concerned.
Correct, and, and the reason I made, made a point of it because I know that they could both be accomplished, uh, the, 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 those parties that you wanted on the board can be accomplished both ways, but having written their names in, that's in, in legal terms, that means those names cannot be removed. Um, there's, and, and other, unless I missed it, it didn't allow the mayor to make the change or any other government official, is what I was concerned, is that correct?
The, the initial board, uh, is appointed to terms of years. Three of them are appointed to four-year terms initially, and then two of whom get two-year terms, or, maybe I'm going backwards. But then, and then thereafter, everyone serves a four-year term, so that half the board is, is staggered every couple of years. And the mayor would make reappointments with the consent of the Board of Aldman.
So they still have to submit the names and it still goes through the approval process?
Right.
The mayor has to, uh, they submit a pool of names, the mayor can select those names from that pool, and then send them over to the board to be confirmed.
And that's after the initial...
And, and so state again the requirements for board member?
To be a board member. Under the statute. Eighteen years old, eighteen years of age, Missouri resident, resident, business owner or property owner of property in the district.
In the TIF district.
In the TIF district.
In the CID.
In the CID district.
And then if the CID is just the, you know, specific property, then it would just be the only...
Yeah, there's, this is a very small area.
Yeah, I know it's not any...
And the might be saying there are no residents in, in the district, it's one property owner essentially.
So it gives, it's a real limits, who are the potential appointees. But that's under the state statute.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Madam Controller, appreciate you bringing these important issues to our attention. And I think this was a very productive discussion, so. We, we, we got to prove the, yeah, we got to prove the other. So we proved, uh, the amendments, and now, um, it's our, um, our, our task to, uh, vote this time on the bill as amended, uh, one forty-nine as amended. So at this time, I'll take a, undertake a motion to, to approve Board Bill one forty-nine as amended.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those, uh, in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and motion carried. Now, what we did is, um, and since it's been unanimously approved, so what we've done is, as, as a body here, the board bill is over to Board of Aldman. So what we're doing is we're recommending these amendments. We, we are approving these amendments to the bill, but they, they, they technically have to be done at the Board of Aldman. So we have approved the amendments, um, but again, they have, they have to technically be made over there. So we're not actually amending them here, we're just...
And they'll make it a floor substitute of the board.
I'll handle it procedurally the way they need to handle it over there, so, all right? Very good.
Very good.
So, uh, if there's nothing further to be brought before this special meeting, I'll undertake a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.